And Infrastructure Subcommittee. Before we start our agenda, I would like to have a couple of people come up and introduce themselves. Kate Riley and Dave Todd, would you like to come up and tell us what your new positions are?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. It's nice to be able to be here this morning and introduce myself. I'm Kate Riley. I'm the General Manager for the Paratransit Project for Valley Metro that will begin on July 1. I most recently come from Tucson where I was General Manager for Suntran and Sunvan.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Dave Todd. I am just recently appointed the General Manager for Phoenix North and South Transportation. Worked for TransDev. We run the 72 percent of the bus service here in the Valley. We just recently kicked off the second phase of the expansion. It's going relatively well. A few tweaks to make, but we're very proud of what we're doing and we're going to continue to do everything that our client asks us to do and do it the best we can. And we're proud of what we do and the relationship we have with the city.
Well, thank you both and thank you for coming this morning. As we continue to expand our services, it is always a great relief to meet the people who are going to be managing it and make it even better. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
I will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March 14th. Do we have any corrections? Motion? Do you have move approval?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, we have a voice. I take it Councilman Valenzuela is on the phone.
I am, Councilwoman. I'm on my way in, but I am on the phone.
Thank you. Next are the minutes of April 11th. Any corrections or a motion? Move approval?
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next are the consent items three through five. Does anyone need any additional information? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Move approval?
Okay.
I have a motion to approve items three through five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Brings us to item... Which is informational only. Anyone seeking more info? No? Item seven is the Citizens Transportation Commission Meetings. I know we get summaries of their meetings. Does anyone have any comments, questions? While hearing none, we're going to be on item eight. We're just moving right along. This is where we are talking about recycling infrastructure for new multifamily and commercial developments.
Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, here to talk about recycling for multifamily commercial developments is Karen Peters, Deputy City Manager, our newly-appointed Public Works Director, Ginger Spencer, and Jesse Duarte, Deputy Public Works Director.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. As you know, you've heard a lot from residents of Phoenix, recycling is not readily accessible to every resident of our community and they are asking you why. And you in turn have asked us why and to explain that and talk a little bit about measures that we can take as a city to address the concerns that residents have brought to you. This is not something that can be addressed with one action by the council. This is a multifaceted issue. One of the things that we have done, as you know, is implement eco-stations, which are facilities throughout the city where individuals who want to recycle but don't have access to that service today can bring the recyclable material and the city will collect it and take it to our transfer station and get it to where it needs to go. So, we're excited about that and hope to be able to expand that in the future. But that's one step. As the Chairwoman particularly has pointed out, there are issues that need to be addressed in order for more residents of our community to have access to recycling services. One of them is infrastructure at multifamily and commercial properties. There simply isn't room today at many of these facilities for both a refuse bin and a recycling bin. And so, we want to talk a little bit more about that and explain the details of that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ginger who will talk through it.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Madam Chair and Subcommittee Members, thank you for this opportunity today to provide information on our current policy in regards to providing recycling and solid waste capacity at multifamily properties as well as commercial. But the reason why we're doing this, as Karen stated, is this is all part of our Reimagine Phoenix effort, which was the goal set forward by Mayor and City Council for us to achieve a 40 percent diversion from the landfill by the year 2020. So, we're currently at 20 percent and we need to double that in the next three years. And so, it's the Reimagine Phoenix program is... Has three principles. It's new programs and services. So, as Karen mentioned, we've got eco-stations now that we're making available in every council district for residents who may not actually have access to recycling. It's about education and community outreach. We're at a lot of your community events. We're at neighborhood meetings in the weekends. We're just trying to educate our residents about recycling more, recycling right. And then, thirdly, public-private partnerships. In order to achieve this goal, it's an ambitious goal, we need to partner. We need to partner with the private companies and we also need to partner with other public organizations. We know we can't go it alone. So, what can we do? The Solid Waste Ordinance is Chapter 27 of the Phoenix City Code. Basically says that the Public Works Department, we can provide garbage and recycling services to single-family residential. We can also provide it to duplex, triplex, and fourplex. The next one I'm going to come back to. We can also do mobile homes, townhomes, and condominiums, and then institutional establishments. So, institutional establishments, those are churches, nonprofits, other government agencies. So, that's what we can do and we do that. Multifamily, less than 30 units. So, that's... We may do that. It's not a shall. So, basically, if the city and the property owner agree to us having the city provide those services, then we can go in there and provide the collection services. Anything over 30 units, that is considered multifamily and commercial and that's provided by the private sector. So, companies like Allied, well, Republic Services, Waste Management, Sonoran Waste, Premier, just to name a few of those companies. So, when it comes to actually requiring recycling capacity in new developments, multifamily, the 30-plus, or commercial, we have a standard, a Public Works Access and Containment Standard that basically recommends language that says we'll have equal recycling capacity, but it doesn't require it. So, here's the actual language. It's a whole lot of words up there. As you can see, the one side is specific requirements. For example, if you're a restaurant, we require you to have a grease trap, right? And then, on the other side is recommended language, right? And so, the one that we want to highlight today is City of Phoenix recommends providing recycling capacity equal to required solid waste capacity for commercial developments and multifamily developments. And this right here, the recommendation, that's what we're here to talk about specifically. So, to give you more details on that requirement, unless there's any questions, I'll have Jesse kind of walk through what that means. Okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Subcommittee Members, some of the things that we look at for trash containment standards is you look up there right now. Right now, we said recycling capacity equal to solid waste capacity when they go and look at these type of enclosures. If you look at the current picture right now, that's a 24-foot double-wide enclosure that they've utilized. We also have, make sure it's a minimum of six-foot-high minimum wall. And then, we also have the single enclosures, which are 12-foot wide as well. The other thing that we do is we make sure that they have gates to screen for public viewing. The thing is, we want to make sure that they're enclosed, that they can't see them. And also, if you notice in the back, there's a little gate opening in the back for the residents to be able to come in through the back instead of having to open those large gates. A lot of these standards that we utilize is a common standard from other cities around us in Maricopa County area that they use basically the same thing. They do tweak... They are tweaked a little bit, but there's only one city right now that actually requires you to have a recycling containment and that's the City of Mesa. Other than that, these are the current standards that we have.
Okay. Oh, that was good. Okay. So, we're trying... We're trying to be responsive to residents' requests to have access to recycling. And what we've done is we've actually started our outreach with stakeholders and started discussions. So, we've reached out to the Arizona Multi-Housing Association and we've also reached out to Valley Partnership. And they have also... They're working with their stakeholders, but we know there are others out there. And so, what we want to do over the summer is to make sure that we're reaching out to the community, that we're getting input, and that we're actually working with AMA and Valley Partnership and their stakeholders to come up with solutions. One of the things that we've heard in our initial discussions is the properties are varied, right? And so, really, there is no one size that fits all. And we're also hearing that a lot of the companies are moving towards this effort. And so, we want to work with them to find out more about these businesses. Right now, we don't have access to that information, but by working with them, we can also learn more about what they're doing and then we hope to work together to come up with solutions. And that's our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
We do have one card.
Okay.
Jake? Is it Henman?
Madam Chair, good morning, members of the Subcommittee. My name is Jake Henman and I'm here on behalf of the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. So, staff did a great job giving you an overview. They sort of stole my thunder on quite a bit of it, so I'll just sort of fill in some of the holes from my perspective. So, I had the pleasure of meeting with them for the first time, actually last week, to talk about this. In fact, it was my first time meeting Ginger. And upon meeting her, I know she has some big shoes to fill with Mr. Tejio's departure, but I think she's going to do some incredible... An incredible job. So, just a quick overview. So, staff mentioned that, you know, every apartment community is very different. You know, we have garden-style apartments that are spread out, you know, 15-plus acres to mid-rise apartments to high-rise apartments, all requiring different varying degrees of infrastructure. And quite frankly, I think we've come a long way, actually, in the last 10, probably even five years. Yet, when I... Jesse and I tried to tackle this five years ago, you know, I think many of our observations, some of the conversations I had with some of our members was quite a bit different. But, you know, I think thanks to this council's leadership, staff's leadership, and quite frankly, the market demand, we're seeing kind of a new wave of recycling in apartment communities. I did a very, very quick survey and it was really just the apartments that I drive by on my way to work. So, if you imagine, if you can think of Roosevelt Street, quite a few new apartment communities going up. Third Street and Roosevelt, you have four on each corner. From what I had just initially gathered, three of those four definitely offer... Are offering recycling. The fourth, I just haven't heard back. If you think of McDowell and Third Street as well, that apartment community will be offering recycling. Central McDowell, that apartment community will be offering recycling. So, just my initial... The feedback that I received from some of our members is many of them are actually moving to this. We're also seeing different degrees of how they're accomplishing recycling. You had a picture up there about a large enclosure area. Some of our members, in fact, there's a Councilmember Williams, this is actually just out of your district, I think it's in District 2, but there's a new site going up, garden-style, 16-plus acres, large community. And instead of 15-plus enclosure areas spread across the entire community, they have one centralized compactor with a recycling collection area and then they actually offer door-to-door pickup of both solid waste and recycling. So, residents don't actually take out their trash. They simply place out their bag of trash outside their door and it's collected. So, again, infrastructure doesn't necessarily exist other than that central recycling area, but it's a different way to tackle the issue. And I think that's sort of the message and I think, you know, probably those conversations need to be had with staff in that there's just many different ways to accomplish this. So, I look forward to working with staff over the next couple of months to sort of flesh out these details. I'm going to do my best in working with our members and trying to figure out who's actually doing and how many members are currently collecting recycling. And quite frankly, I was surprised, just the initial reaction I got in the last couple of weeks of even existing properties moving in this direction. We have some of our largest members who have their entire portfolios now offering recycling services. Many of them are actually using the door-to-door waste collection service that I mentioned previously. So, I hope that helps with this discussion and I certainly stand for any questions.
Do you survey your members?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gallego, we do. You know, sometimes it's a large membership. We have 2,000-plus members and over 220,000 units. It's hard to get everybody to respond, as you can imagine, but generally, yes, we can probably and we will reach out to our members to get a general sense. You know, had we had this meeting next week, I probably would have had even more detail for you. We have a Board of Directors meeting this Thursday. Some of our larger property owners are going to be there. It was my plan to actually sort of get a sort of initial survey and I, you know, obviously any results that I receive, I will share with this committee and with staff.
If you were to guess what percent of multifamily properties offer recycling now?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gallego, you know, I would be uncomfortable even attempting that right now, but I would say that I was surprised. You know, when we received feedback from our members five years ago when we were talking about this issue, you know, we certainly had an indication that the market was moving in this direction, but the feedback I received just these last couple of weeks, I mean, it was surprising in terms of the level of folks that were actually not only offering this in their new construction, in the new product, but folks that are actually converting their existing portfolio to offer. But in terms of a specific percentage, I don't want to give you something that I can, you know, that's not entirely accurate. But I will definitely try to get you that number and go from there.
When we did the My Plan Phoenix process, which was a community-wide conversation about the future of Phoenix, the number-one thing people wanted, they said, was recycling at multifamily facilities. The thing they most wanted to change in our city. So, that was a powerful message to me that this was something that we as a council ought to work on and that there is demand.
Madam Chair, Councilmember... And I would certainly say, you know, we certainly want to provide our residents with everything they want. You know, there's just, you know, there are realities that we have to sort of get beyond, one of which is infrastructure and the other potentially is, we just need resident buy-in. So, if residents, you know, do in fact want to recycle, we just, you know, unfortunately, we can't offer a service that only a small percentage, you know, participate in. So, I think as the market moves in this direction, and to your point, the more people actually want to recycle, I think you're going to see just the overall shift to most, if not all of the communities, offering the service.
And then, we also have residents who are very interested in properly disposing of household hazardous waste, so batteries being perhaps the most common example. Is that something you've talked to your membership about? Where are...
Madam Chair, no, I haven't. Actually, that's probably the first time I've heard of it, but I can certainly see, you know, where we're at with something like that. You know, I can tell you it's sort of unrelated, but related. You know, many of our members are interested in figuring out what to do with abandoned furniture, you know, things that are left behind when a resident moves out. We're actually talking to some of our nonprofit partners to figuring out a mechanism to actually get some of that abandoned material, you know, whether it's furniture or, you know, you name it. How do we get that? Whether it's recycling or to reuse it, repurpose it with some of our nonprofit partners. So, I can't share you any specific details yet with that, but just know that we're actually having those conversations.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question. You had made a statement that you possibly surveying the multifamily properties. I'm more interested in those that are renting or those that are part... Live in multifamily properties because I would like to know their opinion on recycling because more than likely, I have a feeling we would be above 50 percent that they would want to recycle, but the multifamily properties don't offer it. So, I think in a way, we have to work backwards as to... And I'll use the industry, supply and demand, and the demand is there. That's the only way owners will shift. And if the demand is there, then work backwards as to how do we become innovative and creative to make this happen? As you gave some great examples. The other piece would be in certain areas of older infrastructure, maybe there are several multifamily properties within that area that come together, have a dialogue and say, how do we maybe possibly, working with the city, put a larger bin somewhere where everybody knows this is where to go and drop off? So, I think that's... It's good to hear that five years ago, obviously, it was dead in the water. It's good that everybody has evolved because I think our generations and millennials are telling us what they want and that's what we're doing. And I think it's great. But I think the conversation is evolving and we'll get to that point. My question is older properties. Because old... I have older properties in the district, like majority of us do, but in the slide, it stated that it needed to be contained... A minimum of six-foot masonry wall, 12-foot single enclosure, 24-foot double enclosures. That won't happen in our older established multifamily properties. So, we, I think as a city, has to come up with some other creative way of helping those multifamily properties get to where we want to get to. So, I don't... And I'm sure you agree with me.
Sure. Madam Chair, Councilmember... I agree with everything you just said. To your most recent point, you know, staff, I'm going back probably 10 years ago and I don't see your Planning Development Department or Allen in the room right now, but he actually drafted some changes for existing properties to, whether it's removing a parking space, whether it's working with the landscape setbacks, et cetera. You know, there's probably more things that we could do to encourage, for lack of better terms, a retrofit of existing properties to accommodate new and additional bins. But even the service that I mentioned earlier, the door-to-door service, as more folks are utilizing that, I think we're going to see the costs on something like that go down and that is potentially another way to solve sort of the existing property. That sort of service, there is a cost to it, which is why you probably aren't seeing it more widespread. But again, we're seeing more and more properties utilize something like that. So, not to use a crystal ball, but I would suspect that the costs may go down. Existing properties probably will tap into something like that. You bet?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams and Vice Mayor Pastor, just to add to that, back in 2009, we did change the zoning ordinance to allow for recycling capacity at existing structures. So, you can actually remove some of the landscaping or parking space in order to provide that. And we do have Teresa Hillner here from the Planning Department if there's any questions on that, but that is in effect.
We have another card. Stacy, can I have that?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I just, first of all, want to say thank you for... It was, I think, just over two years ago that I was standing in this space and so it's nice to see forward movement and I think the staff is doing an amazing job at looking for solutions. I know it's a very complex issue. A couple of things to the infrastructure piece. I think that the city would be wise at looking at actually making that a requirement for new builds instead of just having it be a guideline. I think that's how we're going to not continue to have these conversations over and over and over in the future if it's proactively addressed now. I think that that's a pretty common thing in a lot of large cities to have that requirement for new build construction, that that just be there. So, then we won't have to worry about the buildings that are being built now, recycling moving forward. Secondly, with the multifamily, with the current ordinance as written, now it might be a good time to think about changing that so that the city has some more leeway to offer recycling to multifamily moving forward. And then, third, my question, I guess, would be once all of this is rolling, since private waste is still obviously involved and knowing you can't manage what you don't measure, I don't know if there's something that's in place to help that so that the multifamily units that say that they are recycling, there can be some sort of measurement or data collection requirement from them so that, I guess, as we move towards the 40-by-20 goal, you know that that multifamily recycling is actually going to the MRF and not the landfill. So, those would be my three things. But I'm very thankful that this is moving. I sincerely thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I know you've always been a champion for this cause. I think we've had many conversations over the years on this. So, slowly but surely, we're moving forward and you're going to meet over the summer, work with everyone. And, you know, you might even contact some of the big commercial haulers to see what works best for them and let them know we're moving in this direction and incorporate some of their suggestions. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I just assumed and it's one of the... One of the items that I should not be assuming, always to ask, I assume that in planning and zoning for multifamily properties, that this was part of, I guess, the planning and zoning piece. And it was part... It is part of a new multifamily properties. Because in the statement earlier that I heard was, this is... It is in order to do... The way we incentivize it is by not having, I guess, I can't remember what you said, but you said certain...
So, the zoning ordinance, that deals specifically if we want to make changes to existing developments. The Public Works Solid Waste Ordinance, which is Chapter 27 of the Phoenix City Code, that deals with actually access and containment. So, we actually have a standard that comes out of Chapter 27 that basically gives us guidelines for the collection of solid waste and recycling and also any type of containment enclosures and that sort of thing for new developments. So, it's two separate items and we're working very closely with Allen Stevenson. He couldn't be here this morning. He's in the meetings with us, with stakeholders. And so, we're working very closely because whatever we're doing, if there is an impact to the zoning ordinance, we want to make sure that we're working together on that. But right now, what we're talking about today for new development is specifically through Chapter 27 of the Solid Waste Code and we have a standard that gives more detailed information on what we're requiring. So, if you're looking at capacity, if we need 12 feet, you know, to put our recycling bins and our garbage bins and additional 12 feet, then that's what we're looking for. If we're requiring the gates and that sort of thing, that's the details that's included in the standard.
Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, I'm not the expert. Maybe it'd be good to have Teresa come up to give some detail, but as it relates to the zoning ordinance, the requirement is not in the zoning ordinance, but there are some elements in the zoning ordinance that give relief from parking requirements or that kind of thing. I'll let you explain, Teresa.
Thank you very much. Yes, Teresa Hillner, Planning and Development Department. We do allow reduction of parking spaces and reduction of landscaping to accommodate the retrofitting of recycled bins for the multifamily, existing multifamily development.
So, it's... That's for the older properties, we're retrofitting it?
That is correct.
What about the newer properties being built?
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Pastor, there's requirements based on the size of the new development. So, if it's a smaller new development on an existing site, there are reductions of parking. And then, if there's larger, there's a different process by which you can reduce the parking.
Okay. So, there is, was what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could add, though, the issue that we have identified is that the mandate for equal capacity for refuse and recycling is not in place in Phoenix. We do not have that requirement today that when you build a new multifamily or commercial property, you have equal access for refuse and recycling. It's merely a recommendation in our standard. What we want to do is engage the community about different ways to do that. You heard from Jesse that the City of Mesa does require it. It is a mandate there. That would be an easy way to approach it, but we really... But we really want to engage our partners in the community and talk about whether that's the only way. And here are their suggestions.
As you know, nothing is simple when you go to change these things.
No, I know. Yes, I know.
When I first voiced this, I thought, okay, planning takes care of this. And then I bumped into, oops, solid waste has a ordinance that must be addressed as well. So I thank you.
Can I actually, I have a few questions as well, I apologize.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
When we made those changes to the standards, what have we seen in terms of people coming in doing retrofits?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, I am, I'm not sure whether or not we have seen, I'm going to guess, a significant increase in the ability to do that. My experience has been with retrofitting development. They try to maximize what they can. Usually, they want to avoid parking reductions. But if the residents want the recycling, we are accommodating them on the sites that are constrained anyway.
So could we challenge you to look and see what's happened since we made those changes? And just, it would be helpful for us to have real data about whether voluntary measures had any effects.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, yes, we can. While we're doing a survey of what's out there, we can certainly examine what advantages that people were taking since we've changed the ordinance.
And could we take a sample of recently permitted multifamily housing and look at how many did offer recycling? Or do you look as if we may have already thought of this?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, we just did a quick sample earlier today. And out of the 53 property, new development properties that have gone out, 28 of them have put recycling infrastructure into their properties. 12 of them have not, and 13 were not sure what they've done so far with them.
Okay, that's a lower rate than I would have guessed, just given the demand. But I know for myself, when I was shopping for an apartment, I just assumed it would have recycling and was surprised to find out it did not. And so maybe a market failure on my part where I didn't know to ask ahead of time. But I'm surprised that so many are choosing not to do so at the beginning.
Well, and in the, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, it's only really looking at 12 that are not doing recycling. 53, 20 of them are, and we're still, the 13, we're still unknown what they're doing with those. But it's over 50%, and that's actually moving pretty good.
And of those 12, was there any trends, smaller apartments or...
We don't know. We just did a quick study of what was permitted.
Okay. I think that would be just helpful to understand, really.
As I say, Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, we can work closely with the Planning Department to do that survey and to get that sample and come back with additional information when we come back in the fall.
And in the fall, I would love to see an option for this committee to move forward with that as a requirement.
Okay.
I also was hoping we could include household hazardous waste as we study this particular issue because I think that is important. And this committee in particular wants to keep our water supply in good shape. And so making sure people have responsible, have opportunities to responsibly dispose of household hazardous waste is very important. I also have spoken with some private sector haulers who've said that if the city challenged them to do better, they could do more. And so that's something I would like to look at as well, that they would need their clients to be supportive of it, but that they have ideas of things that aren't happening as well. And then I, when we were making the decision as a city to move forward with composting, I really wanted first to go with multifamily recycling as a top priority. And I was told that we could do both within the existing budget, and so it was not an either-or decision. So would love to get an update on the cost of having the city be more involved with recycling services and sort of what would be the infrastructure we would need to have, what would be the financial impact. And then a final suggestion, we have a rental tax that we collect on multifamily housing. Could we check and see if we're going to be communicating with folks who pay that tax for any reason? And that might be also an opportunity to collect data for this if we're already talking to people who operate rental properties. Obviously, the bulk of those are, I think, are single-family houses, which already have services. But perhaps there's an opportunity to get better data.
Thank you. We will.
I think if this is something residents have said at one point was the top thing they wanted us to do better, then let's rise to that challenge.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
In your next steps with AMA and Valley Partnership, what are your next steps?
Right, so what we're going to do is we're going to have some follow-up meetings with both organizations. They're continuing to get information from their members, and they will be providing that to us. We're also going to reach out, as our chairwoman suggested, to commercial haulers as well. And we may want to also have some community meetings as well so we can hear from renters and actual residents on what they would like to see. So, again, we're going to be busy, very, very busy, working on this over the summer so that we have a full picture of what's going on in this specific area. And then we want to bring that information forward and come back with some solutions and work together with stakeholders, with the community, to come up with some innovative and creative solutions.
So may I suggest that, in particular AMA, only because I know it's an association with multifamily properties, that a survey, a collaborative survey of questions be done to residents and property owners to understand what their need is in the recycling world.
Yes.
If needed, and we may be off, and so we may not need it, so I don't know. I would like to, I would actually like data to see what is happening and what is the pulse of everything. The other piece is, it's, this says, you specific, current language. This is the current language right now? Is this all, where's, what type of language or type of possible change of language are we looking at?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, one change that we have contemplated is simply to move that recommendation into the requirement column so that it is required that there be equal space for both kinds of containers. When we put that out to our stakeholders, the response we got was, one size does not fit all. We want to talk to you about whether that's the right approach. So the initial thought was just to move it into the requirement column. But we want to talk about whether there are other ways.
Well, I think that's actually an excellent idea only because sometimes when the term requirement, I'll use another very negative term, mandatory, it causes people to go to left field and spiral into another world. So what would be great to know is who's already doing it?
Yes.
And what do we need to do to incentivize others to do it? And I think what we're trying to do is really create a great environment and create a behavior change of recycling. I think it's probably already there. It's just, how do we now make it happen? And I'm sure our partners who we collaborate would like to help in that. So, thank you for doing that, and those are all my questions.
I have, I'm sorry, one more.
All right, one more.
This will be it for Planning and Development for Teresa. When we occasionally have votes at the council involving multifamily properties and new builds, would it be possible for us to put in the council memo whether there is recycling? And that would help us, I think, educate ourselves about where it's happening and where it's not?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, we certainly can. That can be part of a staff report that identifies whether or not the builder or the developer is providing recycled facilities.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm just mentioning, as developers come through with new projects, I always mention space for recycling as well as a place for dogs. It's kind of my two, a better included if you put it together.
Good leadership.
Thank you all very much, and we look forward to you coming back this fall.
Thank you.
We go to item nine, Water Treatment Plant Infrastructure Renewal Program.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, here to talk about water treatment plant infrastructure is Catherine Servison, Water Services Director, along with Troy Hayes, Assistant Water Services Director, and Amy Conroy, Deputy Water Services Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair, committees. Thank you so much for listening to us today. We're just here to take you on the next stop in our tour of our infrastructure. Today, we're going to talk about water treatment plants and pump stations. And I'll hand it over to Assistant Director Troy Hayes.
Well, good morning. We're excited to come talk to you about a couple of our programs today. And the first one that we have is the water treatment plants. As you can remember from our previous presentations, where the treatment plants, we have five of them spread out throughout the city of Phoenix. And this is where we're taking water from the rivers or from the lakes, and we're treating that to exceed federal and state requirements for drinking water standards. Those plants treat to those levels, and that's how we ensure that we're putting out the highest quality product to our customers and for today and for the future. And Amy Conroy will go through how we are ensuring that that infrastructure that we have in place at those water treatment plants are for here and for future generations.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the, oh, I forgot, did the wrong one, sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee. I'm here to talk about our asset management-based rehabilitation program of our water treatment plants. As Troy said, we have five of them with approximately 20,000 assets that we maintain and rehabilitate and replace over time. This program helps us do it in a very concise and thought-out way. Here's a map of the city. You can see that our plants are located throughout the metropolitan area. Three of them are located on the Salt River Project system on both the south and the Arizona canals. And two of our newer plants are located on the CAP system, with the Lake Pleasant being our newest plant up in the Northwest Valley. Currently, our rehabilitation program is focused on our older plants, which is the Deer Valley facility, the 24th Street facility, Val Vista, and Union Hills. We're doing larger rehabilitation programs on a four-year rotating cycle because we usually have larger plant shutdowns associated with those rehabilitations. So we would like to only have one plant out at a time. That allows us to continue to provide service to our customers. And then, but we do continuous renewal of less complex systems annually for smaller, for smaller things that either we can buy pumps or other equipment that plant staff can replace themselves or that we use smaller job order contractors to do work with. We have a 10-year program that is about $410 million. It's split not really equally between the facilities. Deer Valley only has $67 million because the majority of the treatment train at Deer Valley was reconstructed in 2010, so it's newer. So this $67 million is more focused on the ancillary equipment such as solids handling, chemical feed. While at 24th Street, Val Vista, and Union Hills, we are looking at major electrical upgrades, system upgrades. Especially at 24th Street, which is why you see such a large dollar item. Our electrical system is quite old, and we definitely in need of rehabilitation. As I said before, we are using asset management tools. So we're looking at our assets, we're looking at the condition, we're scoring them, we're ranking them, we're doing continuous assessments so that we replace the right piece of equipment at the right time. So we either do maintenance to extend the useful life or we replace it to restart the clock on that asset, on that asset's life cycle. All of our renewal, like I said, is based on the age, the condition, how critical it is to the treatment facility. For us, public safety such as disinfection and fire systems are our number-one criticality. And then we also look at the risk, what would happen if we lost that particular asset to the treatment process. I'm going to talk a little bit about our plants. Deer Valley, which is, like I said, we, is 100 million gallons a day. And we rebuilt the treatment train in 2010. It's located on the Arizona Canal at 31st Avenue in Dunlap. And the original plant was built in 1964, followed by our oldest operating plant, which is 24th Street Water Treatment Plant, located at 24th Street in Lincoln, just south of the Arizona, or just north of the Arizona Canal. Its capacity is 140 million gallons a day and was built in 1959. It's a pretty compact site. They're located just south of Lincoln. Our Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which is our largest treatment plant, is actually located in Mesa, who is a co-owner, and is located south of the South Canal. So this is, this allows us to have treatment plants on both sides of the SRP system so that when the canals are down, we don't have all our plants down at once. It was built in 1975. Our oldest plant on the CAP is the Union Hills Water Treatment Plant, which is located at Cave Creek Road and Deer Valley. It's 160 million gallons a day. Currently, we are just upgraded our solids handling facility, and we'll be looking at electrical on this site as well. And then our Lake Pleasant Plant, which is our newest plant and is 80 million gallons a day, is currently operated by the American Water Company and is located off of Carefree Highway in the Northwest Valley. So here's some pictures.
Let me ask a quick question. Is that the daily capacity?
No, this...
I mean, it doesn't have the capacity to go much higher than that, I guess is what I'm asking.
Madam Chair, the treatment capacity, what the plant could actually treat is 80 million gallons a day, based on a lot of different factors and some distribution or transmission system items, as well as contracts. We actually only base load this plant at 25 million gallons a day. So we have the capability to treat, to treat much more.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So now I'm going to show you some pictures of things that we've done under this program. We replaced some ferric chloride plants. Like I said, at Deer Valley, we did retreat, we did rebuild the treatment trains, but we are slowly rehabilitating our chemical feed systems, which are very crucial to providing safe water. At 24th Street, we did a phased approach, and we removed and replaced all of our flaculation and sedimentation. This is part of the pretreatment within the plant where we remove some of the heavier solids and add chemicals. So we did the majority of the plant, and our next rehab will replace the rest of the basins as well as upgrade our electrical system. At Val Vista, we replaced a, just recently replaced a poorly operating sedimentation basins that were added in one of the expansions and with a brand-new, more efficient sedimentation system within the existing footprint. So we took them down, used the, basically the outer walls, and built something that would, is more similar to our other facilities at that plant within the same footprint. So we're pretty excited about that. We also have been working on the electrical upgrades at Val Vista, and this is just one of the substations that provides electrical power to the processes within the Val Vista plant. At Union Hills, like I said, we just upgraded our solid system. And part of that was also looking at our, what we call super scrapers, which are part of our pretreatment system, and we're slowly rehabilitating those. So we looked at the condition, and then we're replacing what needs to be replaced. I think that is it. So if anyone has any questions on treatment plant renewal?
With, we have a lot of electrical upgrades we're making. What has been the record for power outages so far? Do we track?
Yeah, so power outage, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gallego. So power outage is what we see on the operational side are, for the most part, associated with storms that we get. Most of the time, those are less than an hour or so. We're a number-one priority of our electrical providers. And so along with hospitals and other things, they're really quick to get us back up. For the most part, that's really what we've seen, an hour or so.
Great, thank you.
We appreciate the presentation. I know this is an ongoing challenge for you, and it's very expensive, and I can't imagine what the electric bill is every year. Afraid to ask, so, yeah. So, thank you. And now you're going to do the next one?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
We liked it so much, you're staying again.
You're on a roll, just keep going.
So the next one we have is the booster pump station rehabilitation replacement program. And so the booster pump stations are really the heart of our system. And so this is where we're moving water, you know, north and making sure that we have reliable water in all of our zones. We have 77 major zones throughout the city, and we don't necessarily have a plant in all those since we only have five or so. And so we, the plants are running at continuous levels. We're then pumping out of our reservoirs and things like that to those zones. And this is so we can ensure we have pressures in all those zones that are stable, as well as making sure that we have the abilities to meet fire flow and other demands that we have that may change throughout the day. Amy will go through our program on the booster pump stations.
So this picture is a, of our booster station 3BB3, which means it is the third booster station in Zone 3B, which is locate, this particular station is located at our 24th Street facility and serves customers that are located north and east of the, of the plant. This is what we'd like our booster stations to look like currently. This is not how they all look, and I'll be showing you some pictures of that. We currently have 104 booster stations throughout the city of Phoenix. And I'll be showing you a map that shows in two parts where those are. You can tell that they range in age from back in the 1950s. The station that we're replacing with the picture that you just saw was actually built in the 1950s, and some as soon, as new as in the 2010s. But the majority of them are hitting into the 50, 60-year range. Standards have increased, maintenance standards, room. You just get to the point where you can't maintain and rehabilitate more. You have to go ahead and replace them, and that's what this program is for. Our stations are located throughout the valley, and we keep trying to make this picture easier to see, and we never see... easier to see, and we never succeed. But these are all of our booster stations that are north of Greenway Road. You can tell that we have quite a few. What they do is they move water from lower zones and from our treatment plants to the upper zones and keep pressure at the right place within the system. We have more booster stations in the southern portion of the system, so this is south of Greenway. And where you see clusters, those are in mountainous areas, Camelback Mountain, the areas that we serve around Mummy Mountain and Paradise Valley, along the South Mountain Ridge, both north and south of South Mountain, you see different booster stations. As houses go up in elevation, we need to move water to those homes. So that's why you see a lot of booster station clustering around the mountaintops. Some of these stations serve as few as two customers, some serve thousands of customers. So on our small pump stations, that is typically done using our job order contractors. These are usually less than $1 million to rehab or replace. Usually the capacity is anywhere from 200 gallons a minute up to about 3 million gallons a day. We do things such as complete electrical and SCADA control upgrades. We purchase new pumps so they can be replaced by facility staff. We do new piping if our piping's starting to leak or it's starting to rust. We do disinfection system upgrades, and we also improve drainage and graded. A lot of these are on really small sites on mountains, so we oftentimes have erosion issues. We currently invest $40 million in the next 10 years on our smaller systems, and these are the majority of them. These are the majority of our sites. Here's some examples. This was 5GB1. This is located around North Mountain. This was built in the '70s by a developer. It was a very large site, but a very tight footprint within the wall. You can see, as we go through the pictures, that the pumps were starting to get rust, they were faster useful life. The electrical system was starting to, you know, get to the point where we couldn't have spare parts. This is our new booster station. We actually built out to the entire footprint. We have a lot more room to move equipment. You can see that backhoe. On the existing site that I showed you before, there was no way we could have gotten a backhoe or any kind of equipment in there, even a boom truck to remove the pumps. It's very difficult. So that's our small system. Typically, like I said, these are less than $1 million a station to replace and completely replace. We also have our large pump station rehabilitation program. Typically, the capacity is in the five to six or larger million gallons a day. We do a complete replacement of our large-capacity pump stations such as that 3BB3. We assess the site, we look at the criticality, how many other booster stations are in the zone, what is the risk if it fails. We also, like we do with the treatment plant, are using our asset management principles of condition, age, criticality. We also look to see if the capacity's still the right size, especially in some of the inner areas where we're seeing infill. We may have to adjust the capacity either up or down.
I'm sorry, if I could just break in for one minute here. To that point, when we assess the capacity and make sure that it's correct, Amy is also in charge of our energy efficiency group.
Right.
And so one of the things that they do is they go through and look at capacity, is make sure that the pumps are running on the proper pump curves and whether they're sized correctly. And in doing that, they can really potentially save a lot of energy. And so that's a really important part of what Amy and her group are doing. And they've had some really tremendous successes over the last five years. I think we're looking at an annual savings of about $250,000 a year in reduced energy costs because of their efforts.
We do quite a bit of energy pump tests, looking at the existing sites and seeing how much energy we're using. And especially if you're running a station at a lower capacity than what you need or at a higher capacity, your efficiency is just blown. So we spend a lot of time looking at energy efficiency, and we also spend a lot of time seeing if we can get rebates from our energy providers, too. So we also have a lot of pump stations that are multiple pump stations on a site. Our South Mountain Reservoir Site is a perfect example of that, of 27th Avenue in Seton, right just north of South Mountain. We have four, actually four separate booster stations as well as a reservoir at that site. So we often master-plan our facilities, look and see, okay, which one needs to be upgraded now, when are we going to do the next one? So we do quite a bit of master planning so that we can keep our customers in water. This program currently has about $83 million for over the next 10 years, and we basically do one booster station at a time because usually at this size, they're about $8 million apiece. Here's an example of what our 3BB3 site used to look like. It used to be called 3BB1, also still located at 21st Street Water Treatment Plant. The reason we renamed them is because of asset management so that we can keep track of our new system so we can say, okay, it used to be this, it's now that. You can see here that, once again, that site was very tight together. This actually had another booster station that was practically right on top of it. The electrical was getting old, the pipe had leaked, and we had mismatching of piping, different things. It was really difficult to work on this site. It was definitely reaching the end of its useful life and was not very energy-efficient. This is the new pump cans. We actually moved the booster station around the corner near Reservoir 2 where we had better access to water coming into the pump station so that we could have more efficiency. This is getting ready to pour the pump cans, which is where the pumps get their suction. This is an aerial view. You can see how close it is to the reservoir, and we're actually building a second station next to it, to the, I guess, my, your left. Where is that pipe slaying out? We're currently going to start building another pump station. And this is the completing as we're building, putting in new pumps and motors, and this is the completed site. Much easier to access, much cleaner. We updated the electrical so that you have a lot more room to get into it, so that you have room from the front and the back, and much easier for our maintenance staff to work on. I think that's my line. Oops. That's the overall site, once again. And then I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Phoenix Grand Canalscape.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, here to talk about this important project for the Arizona Grand Canalscape is Ray DeValena, Street Transportation Director, and Chris Turner Notware, Deputy Director. And I'll turn it over to Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. This is a great project. We're really excited to present you just information about the project that we're doing along the canal, Grand Canal. First of all, just to mention, this wouldn't happen unless we had the community support as well as the policymakers. This is a fantastic project. We're very lucky to have partnered with Arizona Forward, also with Salt River Project, as well as being one of the benefits of getting some federal funding through the federal government a couple of years ago that we got that. So also it couples with some of the efforts the city has been going on with Reinvent Phoenix as well as some of the transit-oriented development aspects that we've been looking at, trying to make sure that we make a safer connection through all of the whole corridor along Grand Canal. So with me, we have Chris Turner Notware, and she's going to go through the project.
Thank you, Ray. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you so much for letting us do an update on this. I know some of you are very familiar with the project, so thank you again. Looking at the actual project location, the overall Grand Canalscape project limits expand all the way from I-17 to the Phoenix-Tempe border at 56th Street. But we do have Phase 1 of the project. The limits of that are 15th Avenue to 16th Street, and then we do have a section from 36th Street to 40th Street. And Phase 2 has three segments from basically I-17 to 15th Avenue. We have a segment in there from 16th Street to 36th Street. And then the third segment of that is from 40th Street to the Tempe border at 56th Street. The primary intent of the Grand Canalscape project is to develop this continuous commuter path all the way from Glendale to the city of Tempe. Within the city of Phoenix border, we're doing a route for both bicycle and pedestrian traffic along the Grand Canal Bank. We're going to provide safe and convenient walking and cycling, access to neighborhoods as well as transit corridors, local employment centers, shopping and recreation areas. You can see from the typical section up there, some of the things that we're trying to do is provide a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail on here. In Phoenix, we'll have 12 continuous miles when both these projects are done. We're providing some new pedestrian bridges, high-intensity and rapid-flashing crosswalk beacons at the intersections with the roadways, pedestrian lighting, landscaping, and functional art where we have room along the right-of-way, as well as improved neighborhood access connections. And some of these, you can see in the lower-left there that we have some pictures of what some of the functional art's going to look like there. The budget for the project, Phase 1, our total budget is about $6.5 million. And as Ray alluded to, Salt River Project has been a partner on this with our SRP municipal aesthetics funds, and we're also funding Phase 1 with our capital construction fund with the city of Phoenix. Phase 2 has an $18.3 million budget, and we're funding that with the Tiger Grant and also SRP municipal aesthetic funds. And we did have a Tiger Grant on here, and unfortunately, that logo seems to have disappeared.
It's right there.
There it is. Looking at the coordination aspects of this, we've had a lot of coordination with the public and a lot of the agencies Ray mentioned. We have had two public meetings out there talking about both the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 projects. We've coordinated with utility partners. Both APS and SRP have facilities along here that they need to continue to have access to during construction and also after construction. We have ongoing coordination with our police department and how exactly are we going to have safety along the corridor, working in our design with crime prevention through environmental design. I know maintenance has been a big aspect on this. So we do have tentative agreements with Salt River Project that essentially the city will do the maintenance of the pathway and the landscaping, and they will continue to be responsible for trash pickup and debris along the canal bank. So we will be formalizing that maintenance agreement with Salt River Project. From a schedule standpoint, the procurement process for Phase 1 is already underway, and actually that contract for Phase 1 construction will be coming to City Council prior to the end of the fiscal year. Improvements in that construction is anticipated to start late summer and be completed within one year. Working on Phase 2, and basically our final construction documents are due to the Federal Highway Administration by May 31st. And construction on that is anticipated to start in spring of 2018 and continue for about 14 to 18 months. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
We do have one card. Brett, find him. I saw him leave a few minutes ago. Yeah, okay. Do you have questions? Councilwoman?
Could you give us an update on the public art along the canal?
You know what? I actually invited Ed Lebo to the meeting, too. Let me just have Ed come up and talk about--
I just wanted to make it worth his while to--
Yeah.
But as we've talked about before at this committee, I think this could be a great asset for both our residents and for tourists. It connects great tourism amenities like Pueblo Grande, and I could really see people, in particular, I would love to see bicycle tours along that. It's such a unique Phoenix amenity.
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Gallego, Ed Lebo with the Public Art Program. There is about $341,000 in this upcoming canal contract to do the kind of functional artwork that Chris has pointed out along the whole stretch. And so there are some shade structures, two shade structures. There's also going to be seating and also some custom concrete patterning. And this is just in Phase 1. Right now, there is no funding for participation in public art in Phase 2. So that's what's coming along with public art. Council has previously approved a contract for the artists to develop the specialized patterns that the contractor, that streets will be getting under contract, will then apply to the whole setting. So it's a very exciting project with lots of, I think, real opportunities to improve this corridor and make it safer, and also frankly, get more eyes and usage out of it.
And does the federal funding permit use of federal funds on public art?
My understanding is that right now, due to some changes at the congressional level, that they do not.
But municipal aesthetics funds could be used for?
Yes, in fact, we're benefiting right now through some sharing of the municipal aesthetics funds from SRP.
Excellent. Well, that was something I would love for us to look into, and I see that the Chair of the Arts Committee is also on this, so--
Oh, I hear it all the time.
And then also, could you talk about graffiti prevention, since we're also talking about crime prevention through design?
Well, as I mentioned, we are continuing to work with the police department and things of that nature on getting more eyes on the canal and how we're going to go ahead and police the canal. Typically, anything we put out there as far as benches and things like that do have graffiti coating on them. So we work with our manufacturers to make sure that we do have that graffiti coating on them. And then we do work with our Neighborhood Services Department as well, that if things do get tagged, we try and get out there and make sure that we get that graffiti removed as soon as possible. So we do everything we can through our design to try and, you know, prevent it, make sure that what we do put out there, we can remove it as quickly and easily as possible.
Then we've had conversations with property owners. There are some places where we might need to acquire additional easements or space. Would you just give us sort of the update on those conversations?
We have been working through Salt River Project and going out there and talking to property owners. On our Phase 2 project, we have been able to design within the real estate and the right-of-way that we have. On Phase 1, we, again, have been going out and talking with them to make sure that they're aware the project is coming through and that they are going to be getting additional amenities for the easements that they're getting. So I think we're in fairly good shape with all the property owners.
And I don't know if this is the right venue, but at some point, would love to get an update on the heavy rail crossing.
So I think Councilwoman Gallego and I will share this link of the canal. And one of the great concerns is not only graffiti, but homelessness, transient, a lot of possible crime that could possibly happen as we activate this space. So I would like to see, I'm asking for staff, to create two things. One is a maintenance plan, and two, a crime prevention plan. I would like to see that come back to the committee so we can look at it and to include all types of devices on the canal with the use of modern technology, lighting, cameras, all of it. And I would like to see that comprehensive plan as we move forward. This is what I'm hearing from residents that live up against the canal, but in addition to those that use the canal and would like, I would like to be able to say something at my community meetings and be able to say, this is the plan. In that plan, and maybe activating, not learning, activating all their PMPs, their block watches, and how that all comes into play is crucial for this canal to be vibrant and thriving for our city. And so I hear that, and in the plan, we're working with, we're working with, I actually want to see a plan with all the departments that are collaborating and be able to roll it out. As for the art, I think Councilwoman Gallego has a good suggestion of maybe looking at the SRP, is it aesthetics, piece and see how we continue our artwork down the way, all the way from the canal. My, and speaking to neighborhoods or neighbors, maybe possibly us actively working with those that have a back wall and see if we could do a mural. Some have brick walls, some don't, so it all depends on how that works. But us actively engaging on how we move forward with this and make it really a crucial designation place where people will want to go. I think Arizona Forward and Reinvent Phoenix and SRP could all be our partners, but there's other partners that we could reach out to. So those are some of my suggestions. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I think we all agree that we want our canals to be, you know, a place where people can enjoy. We have a large city. Many of us run down the canal, we'll go for walks, we're riding bikes, the whole thing. And we're doing things, some really great things, bringing art into it as well, which I really appreciate. That's going to ultimately invite more people to enjoy this canalscape. So I just want to, I hope it's stating the obvious, but I'll state it anyway. Safety is paramount. And, you know, canal safety is paramount now as we know that it's a very popular place for people to ride bikes, go for a run or a walk. And again, as we make it more inviting, which-- And again, as we make it more inviting, which I am all for, we have to just keep that in mind as well. So, always keeping in mind, I know that not in this area, but 107th Avenue canal scape that Ray, you've been so helpful on, you know, safety is paramount there as well when it comes to all of our canal. Not just someone who enjoys the canals, but also as a firefighter, I will tell you that, you know, it's on everyone's minds when something happens near Canal Bank. Thanks.
One card. Diane?
Thank you Subcommittee, Diane Barker, and I'm in District Seven. And I'm really interested in drainage. I can see the expense the city pays, you know, in the streets departments and Thelby, you know about that, with Mr. Vinn even, how much that the water came down. But specifically, I lived at 40th Street in Camelback and there was canal there and I lived there for about 10 years. And what would happen, the police would have to come and divert the traffic because it would be flooded. There was a low area with the water coming down off of Camelback Mountain. And what I discovered after not being able to go to the workout room, because we were a basement, in the apartment I lived there, 40th and Camelback, was there was an aperture that was only like, what, three feet and maybe two feet with a couple of bars? And it would get clogged obviously with vegetation and everything. So, I had a little shovel and I used to go out there periodically and dig it out because I, you know, was around there. And the water flowed. Well, so I decided to call the city and, no, we don't handle it. I called Salt River, no, we don't handle it. I kept pursuing it. Finally, it was Salt River. And the reason I'm saying this is if you're doing a maintenance with them and that is their purview, have them regularly maintain it because the cost otherwise is huge to the city, okay? And they, so a man came out one time and it wasn't done real well. It wasn't deep enough and boom, we're back again. And it seemed like nobody cared, even my, the company where I lived and all the flooding and the damage. I told them, take a shovel and go across the street and dig it out. So, really, it's if you want to cut down and save some money for the city, make draining a priority, drainage.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. Any more comments, questions?
In this conversation. When we activate spaces like this, because we activated, we have activated other canals and other parts of our cities where the canals are activated, we are seeing some dynamics happening on the canals. In particular, getting, being able to get other establishments involved in handling some of the, and I'm going to just go there, the carts that end up in the canals. And so, there's a push-pull me that goes on with who is responsible for the carts and who is responsible for pulling them out of the canal. And so, I think this is critical with this piece because we've learned from the past that there is a maintenance schedule happening on our canals. And we're able then to be, contact those that are responsible for maintaining the canals. I would like to know if we have a maintenance budget in activating canals, kind of very similar to an arts maintenance budget.
Madam Chair and Vice Mayor, when we go through the design of, you know, through like what we're doing right now, we'll identify elements such as landscaping, irrigation, electrical aspects that would have to have meters, things of that nature. And then, we go through the process, through the budgeting process with the city and include those as elements for budgeting maintenance funding. So, when we do the project, we do have warranties and aspects that are added into the contract when they're building the project. So, we do have some time to make sure that we establish the plants and things are working properly and then it goes into our maintenance schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much for the update. Takes us to Item 12, Oak Street Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Project.
So, we have another multimodal proposed project that we've been working with the community. And here with me is Justin Feek. He's our principal planner in our transportation planning and programming division. So, he's going to talk about our Oak Street project that we've been working on.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, thank you for your time today. Just to give a little overview of this project, where it's at and what it connects to, it is on Oak Street from Third Street where it crosses State Route 51 to the east side and it goes along 20th Place, crosses Thomas Road and then goes northward and it terminates at the Grand Canal. And what this map is meant to show is all the great connections that the project makes. One of the key connections is to the Grand Canal that was just discussed in detail. So, that's a great connection. It also connects to Third Street, which is a major improvement that the street department is programmed for fiscal year 2019. It also will connect to 20th Street project that we're designing right now, which will go all the way to Piestewa Peak Park and northward there. So, this is a great link for our city, for the bicycle network. This project was identified in the 2014 Bicycle Master Plan and it was Priority Number 13. The reason that we chose to go, move forward with this project is that it is a lower volume street and it is a less stressful network for bicyclists to move east-west through the corridor. So, as you can see, this is a very valuable link that will connect many other projects and make the central part of the city well-connected. And I think it's important for the public to realize that, they probably haven't seen a lot in this part of the city yet. We're doing bike lanes on roadways where we can. But in 2019 is when a lot of these larger projects will really go to construction. So, at that time, the public is going to see a lot of improvements in short order and they'll be able to really tell a difference. So, all these are coming. They've been in the development phase and it's exciting stuff. Just to go over the project a little bit more, talk a little bit about the project goals and objectives. As I mentioned, this project is to create a low-stress bicycle network in the center of the city that connects other key routes. This is an interesting project because it does utilize existing infrastructure. Some of that infrastructure is the hawk at 7th Street and there's already a crossing there that is safe that we're going to enhance and utilize. There's also a overpass of State Route 51 that we're looking to utilize. So, that's a great opportunity to take advantage of that existing infrastructure. And then, we're looking to connect to the Grand Canal as I mentioned before. For the types of improvements, the types of improvements in this project are pretty robust. There is cycle track and select segments primarily on the east side of State Route 51 and 20th Place. And the reason we did a cycle track there is to mitigate some conflict points. And then, another part, place where cycle track is going to be implemented is north of Thomas Road. There's a frontage route, road to State Route 51 that is very dangerous for cyclists today. And we feel that having a cycle track on the east side of the road there will separate cars from traffic and create a much lower stress environment for cyclists and also a safer environment for people trying to connect north of Thomas Road to the Grand Canal. So, that's one of the more exciting parts of the project, I believe, because it opens up a larger network by utilizing Grand Canal and the 20th Street project that I mentioned before that we are designing right now. There will be stamped and marked crosswalks where there aren't crosswalks today, which are a safety enhancement. We're looking to upgrade the crossing at 7th Street with new push buttons. A lot of the push buttons now, the riders have to get off their bike and actually go up to the pole that we're going to move the push buttons to closer so that it's easier for the cyclists. There will be bike lanes in key segments of the corridor primarily between 3rd Street and 14th Street and then between 16th Street and 20th Street. We're doing curb extensions. These will be considered in areas of opportunity, but primarily, our initial recommendation is to do curb bump outs between 9th Street and Richland near the Seek Temple because that property is being invested in greatly. And we feel that it'll increase safety in that area by slowing down traffic and making it easier for pedestrians to get in and out of their cars. And then, there's also some other components. We're looking at adding in street trees and things of that nature to enhance the streetscape a little bit where possible. We have pretty robust stakeholder outreach as part of this project. At the very beginning of the project, we identified some key stakeholders and we met with them individually to figure out what they would like to get from the improvements in this corridor. That led to a meeting in October of 2016 where we went to a Coronado Neighborhood Association meeting to get some feedback on preliminary recommendations in our project assessment. We had very positive feedback at that meeting that led us to some of our refined alternatives that I've talked about today. In February 2017, we had a public meeting. We had 64 attendees and the vast majority of attendees did support the project. It was, as you can see in the pictures, we had aerials, we had boards and we got a lot of really good feedback about the design elements of the project. The final part of that public outreach effort was a online and hard copy survey where we received over 135 responses and the vast majority of the responses were in favor of the project as well. So, there seems to be a lot of community support for the project and we're excited about that. So, as we went through the community outreach process primarily at our February 2017 public meeting, the community came together, Coronado Neighborhood Association and a host of residents that live in the area. And they proposed this concept, which we think is a very good concept. And one thing that we're going to do is we're going to look at where we can apply this concept throughout the corridor primarily between 3rd Street and 14th Street and then between 16th Street and 20th Street. And this is a good concept because it slows down traffic and it beautifies the corridor by adding street trees. With that being said, it may, we may not actually implement all the elements in this proposed scenario based on fiscal constraints and also engineering constraints and we actually hand our project off to our Design and Construction Management Division. There may be things out on the roadway that don't make it feasible, but this is part of our recommendation to that group to move forward with it where there's areas of opportunity.
Justin, just to add, there were some aspects of trying to look at some parking along the corridor, that specific corridor, it's not all, the whole corridor. Am I right on that?
Correct. So, there is an area of particular parking concern. It's mainly between 16th Street and 20th Street. And if nothing else, I believe this application would probably be best fit for that because it preserves parking in front of multi-use residential units where we probably need to keep it and be cognizant of that as it goes into design. So, finally, the schedule, here we are today in 2000 and May. The next step is to modify alternatives and refine cost estimates based on what we heard from the public. Those cost estimates will determine to a certain extent what we can and can't do. We need to look at this project in coalition with all the other projects throughout the Street Transportation Department. We have a lot of, we have a lot of projects that we need to deliver and a lot of maintenance. So, that'll ultimately kind of determine the budget range that we have for the project. And we're hoping to get the project into design by fall of 2017, which means it would be programmed in our, the next round of our five-year capital improvement program. And typically, design takes about one year and we're hoping to go to construction in late 2018 and calendar year 2019 to have the project delivered. So, that's my final slide and if you have any questions?
I just know the community is excited. In particular, in particular Coronado area, they were heavily engaged and are waiting for the project to start. So, thank you for all the good work and the outreach.
We do have some cards. Nathan Fidel?
Chairwoman, Councilmembers, my name is Nathan Fidel. I'm a resident of Coronado. I'm born and raised in Phoenix, went to North High and have been riding my bike through that neighborhood for almost 25 years. Thank you very much for dedicating the time, both the Council and the city, to this project, the time and the resources. I participated in the February meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the October meeting and I'm enthusiastic to see that the city is taking into account the neighborhood recommendations or ideas. One thing that I did here, and my comments are, well, I have two points that I'd like to make. The first one is that this is a redesign of an important corridor and I would like the city to take into account not just bicyclists, but also it being a complete street. And so, what I heard addressed was that there were street trees that were going to be put in place. I didn't hear anything about sidewalk trees. There are substantial easements on several sides of the street. There are no sidewalks on some parts of this corridor and I understand that sidewalks will be put into place. And I would encourage the city to shade this street. It is an opportunity for the city to make this a landmark corridor, an example, one that the city can tout and show off that you're serious about a complete street. So, in that regard, planting trees isn't enough because trees need water to grow and there are ways to do that. One is you can somehow figure out how to water it. That's going to cost a lot of money, I suspect. Another is to just harvest the rainwater. The city to the south, Tucson, does a great job of that. There are curb cuts, there are holes put into the sidewalk. It's less concrete. The more shade you have, the better it is. People get out, they walk, it reduces the heat island effect. And that is a significant problem that Phoenix is facing currently and it's going to only get worse. So, I encourage part of the planning process to look into that. The second is from the position of what I do as an attorney, predominantly, I'm a personal injury lawyer. And my firm has had, and this is more of a cautionary measure, but my firm has had success around Arizona in suing cities because they're not protecting bicyclists. And so, you know, I want the city to take this seriously. I'm so happy to hear that by 2019, major projects are going to come into line that do take into account bicyclists, but protecting bicyclists. But from a liability perspective, a little bit of paint on the road isn't going to do it. And so, I just want the city to be aware of that. Don't value engineer this project, please. Make sure that you're taking steps to protect the bicyclists who are on the roadway. Cars, cars don't stop with paint. Cars, drivers who are inattentive don't stop with paint. So, there needs to be steps in place to account for that. Thank you. And again, I'm very happy about this. It's great for the city and as a Coronado resident, I'm very excited about it as well.
Thank you very much. I think I just saw your photo, didn't I?
Yeah, we were up there.
Famous key stakeholder.
Yes, all right. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. I apologize in advance, I kind of wrote some stuff down to help me keep my thoughts together. My name is Drew Brick. I live in the Coronado neighborhood. I'm here this morning speaking on behalf of 300 residents who signed a petition in support for this design that Justin presented. There are some residents here who probably won't be speaking today, but if you'd raise your hand if you're here in support, thank you everybody for showing up. First of all, I want to thank city staff. Justin, you've been so excellent working with the Coronado and Alvarado neighborhoods to arrive at the design presented here today. When I first heard that the city had received a MAG bike grant to create a design for Oak Street, I was so excited because I wholeheartedly agree that this corridor is so important for bikeability in Phoenix. In fact, I was so excited that I gathered 300 signatures in support. So, our neighborhood coalition has been involved with the project since day one, which began well over a year ago. The Oak Street design, as it is shown today, with protected green bike lanes, chicanes for traffic calming and planting of new street trees is so important to the neighborhoods it touches and the future infrastructure projects undertaken by the City of Phoenix. It is resultant from many design It is resultant from many design iterations passed back and forth between residents and staff, and is an excellent example of the public process done right. So again, thanks to the Streets Transportation Department and Justin. This project is important for safety. Oak Street is too wide for a neighborhood street, which engenders dangerously high rates of vehicular speed. It is important for walkability, urbanism, and shade, all of which are key components of the Walkable Urban Code, Tree and Shade Master Plan, Reinvent Phoenix Plan, 2050 Environmental Sustainability Goals, Bicycle Master Plan, Plan PHX, Complete Streets Policy Advisory, and Prop 104 and T-2050. So lots of plans. So I think that this project would be a perfect opportunity to put those plans into actions and to be the city we're aspiring to be. This project is important for social equities, will provide a safe bicycle connection for residents of one of the largest neighborhoods within biking distance to downtown, greater Coronado, and all, all the burgeoning activities. Many low-income families in the area rely on bicycles and walking as primary modes of transportation. This project is important for connectivity. The Oak Street stretch will connect communities on the east side of the 51 all the way to Third Street, where they will be connected to downtown via the future Third Street bicycle improvements. In addition, going the other way, this project will connect to communities on the west side of the 51 to the Grand Canal, which we just heard about. It's important for economic development. Slowing cars down and encouraging more people to take leisurely strolls and bike rides has been shown to boost the local economy due to the fact that they stop more frequently and shop rather than speeding by in a car. Many of the small businesses along Oak Street have signed this petition in support. It has-
Please wrap up.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I appreciate your time, and I hope you consider this project and approve it, and I would like to stay involved in the, in the process going forward with the design and construction. So I hope we can review the plans again as they move on past planning to design. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan Stevenson?
Hi, Madam Chair and Subcommittee members. Somebody can use this mic, too. I worked with Drew on this project. I came in about February at the open house. Anecdotally, I live at, I share a common wall with the Herd Museum, and I have a bunch of friends that live over in Green Gables. And so I'm using that entire corridor all the time to get back and forth. I really like that street. So some of this might be redundant, but that's just to put emphasis on the things that we're concerned about. When I was at the open house, I heard a lot of concern about the speed of cars. And when Drew and I were going, collecting petitions between Alvarado Neighborhood and Coronado, they were repeating the same things that they're, they're freaked out about. One thing we were discussing with Justin earlier was that there's some outliers for speeds with the cars. There's not a lot, it's pretty low traffic counts there, but there can be high speeds that go through there, upwards of 50 miles an hour. If you know about pedestrian crashes, where pedestrians and cars collide, the higher the speed, the more exponentially likely it is for a pedestrian to die. So speeds are number one concern, and we, and, and the designs that we developed, I don't know if you could bring back that slide just to show what we've got? That'd be cool. We are adding chicane as a design element to bring the speeds down. That's kind of like one of our biggest priorities. Street trees is another one. So blah, blah, blah. So yeah, bike lanes are not enough. We want the chicanes to slow the cars down. And again, emphasis on, we're just kind of concerned that this is going to get value engineered. We don't just want speed bumps. We put speed tables in there, but that is kind of lower on our list of priorities. We want the chicane to slow the cars down. And so we garnered a lot of support for this project. We worked with the Coronado Neighborhood Association, almost done, Phoenix spokespeople, and Urban Phoenix Project, and everybody's written letters of support for this. So just, it's really, there's really broad support for, to do something really great on here, so. So I just encourage your guys' support on adding these additional design concepts. So appreciate your time, thank you.
Diwen Chen? I probably just really messed that name up.
Hi, I'm Diwen Chen, Councilman, one of the members of committee. Thank you for that opportunity. I'm Assistant Professor of Landscape Architecture at Arizona State University, and so I'm here also to support the project. But not only that, as researcher and educator, and we are also interested in working with the city, try to monitor the landscape performance. So actually, we could actually, you know, get data to see how the green street works, and I'll encourage incorporating as many green infrastructure to not only, not only trees, but like bioswells and to mitigate the stormwater runoff and mitigate urban heat island effects. And so I have my, one of my undergrad students, actually, she has been working this semester, and I'm preparing some initial kind of research on what's the benefits of having bioswells and trees for this street. So this is one example that I think if, I hope this project moving forward, and as, SU has a group of researchers in CAP LTR, that Central Arizona Project for Long-Term Ecological Research Project in Phoenix. And so we hope actually to also monitor and continue to see the outcomes of like, not only Oak Street, even the canalscape, all this kind of large kind of green infrastructure landscape projects, we can actually work together. And I think I'm, I'm sure the city will be happy to see, you know, all these investments, you know, whether it can actually have, you know, achieve those ecological and social benefits. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. All the cards I have that wish to speak, and I feel real badly, I just discovered a card on 11 that I didn't overlook for Lauren.
I just made it available.
Oh, okay. I did say you're in favor, so thank you. Suzanne Daye, did you want to speak? Last chance. In favor. And again, Lauren is in favor. I don't believe this is an action item today. I think you were just bringing it back for review. All of this has already been pre-approved, so we continue to work with the citizens, the experts, the school, to continue along this design, and we'll look forward to you to bring it back in six or eight months and tell us what progress you've made. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now it's called to the public. Do we have any cards? We do not. Anyone have any future agenda items that you wish to have? There are none, we're adjourned.